I'm pleased to inform us that Paul Mulder has successfully completed the MSBLO Leadership Institute. This year-long program requires the significant commitment by the participants and helps them realize and develop their leadership skills. And we appreciate Mr. Mulder committing to his professional goal. Congratulations, Paul.
Yes, and there's a couple of proposals that we're bringing through. First is for iPads. In 2017, we added iPads into our art classrooms, and they've been able to do some really neat stuff with a site called Artsonia, where the students can submit their work and their parents can see it. They can give a link and grandma can see it from other places and so on. And so those iPads have been in use for eight years, and they can no longer receive OS updates. That means they don't get cybersecurity patches and stuff like that as well. Some of them are, tend to just lock up or freeze up at different times and it impacts instruction. And so we're asking to replace those iPads at this time.
How many were there needed?
I believe it was 130. And we'll be buying 10 packs of them, which are available through the Apple Education. I'll call it a store, but it's part of a statewide bid process. And that was included in the bottom of that sheet. There's a statewide organization called RMC that bids out some of these products for us. Part of that process requires that it be the best price that anybody can get. So if they lower their price for somebody else in the state, they must lower ours to match it. And so we, those prices are the best that can be had, and it's being bid through the NYSD, or the fiscal agent is, but it's available to all schools.
What rate are these primarily used for?
There would be K-8. The kindergarten and the ECC has a few. But then we've got a classroom set in each of the art rooms at the elementary and the middle school.
Do we have any other questions?
Do the other iPads just get thrown away because they're really not useful?
We'll go through them and see if there's anything that we can use them for. Once they can't take an operating system update, it usually means that there's not much that we can install then. Because when you go to the Apple Store and try to install, it says, oh, that operating system's outdated. I can't install one of them.
Yeah, one of the things, I was really surprised by how inexpensive they are, so I think it's great that we get that rate. It looks like you had it pretty dialed in for the number that we need and the number that we're ordering. Does it make sense to have any additional, just in case we have a need for them? You had it dialed right in in the numbers.
I never mind having spares on hand. I'm just trying to be as fiscally conservative there as I can. If we do have a problem with one, generally at this point, we can get a replacement fairly soon. That's what we've done when there's been, like, one in a special ed classroom that broke or something. We've been able to replace those on an as-needed basis.
And I think we could go back to that in major review.
The bid is available to me year-round, so I can go to it at any point. A single one is only like a dollar or two more, but I can go and get those at any time.
Okay, next up, we have our Chromebook proposal.
Okay, so on Chromebooks, we've been, at one point, we were on a three-year replacement cycle. And then Google extended how long we could use them. And so we've been getting a little bit extra out of them. In 2021, we've purchased middle school, their Chromebooks. And we are now at four and a half years on those. And the breakage rate is going up substantially once that we, at least they're not worth repairing anymore given their age. And so we're asking to replace those. And we want to do that now so that we can be ready for our statewide M-Step testing. We want to make sure the batteries are going to last long enough for that test and make sure that the students have every chance to succeed as possible. And I dialed that number in pretty closely.
Next question was going to be, do we have easy access to those too if we need it?
Any other questions on those? Great, thank you on that, Mr. Mulder. And now, continuing with the Paul Show. Mr. Mulder has been our crisis team chair, left the district, and Mr. Mulder actually came to the meeting and volunteered to be the chair of that. He says, I go to all the meetings and I'm, you know, especially with the cybersecurity. And so again, I really appreciate him stepping up, taking that leadership role for us. And, you know, he had the idea that, you know, maybe the board would just kind of like that 30,000-foot view of what all those, what does it mean when we talk about crisis team and the things that they do. So, Mr. Mulder, it's all yours.
Okay, so just, just a few moments on this topic here. We want to create for our students a secure learning environment. And we've done that, and we want to continue that. And when we talk about a secure learning environment, as Dr. Cooper alluded to, it's more than just, do we lock our doors at night? And so I want you to think about, what does a secure learning environment consist of? And I've got some different pictures here that represent some different areas. So on the top left, we've got a lockdown button. We know about lockdown drills that we've been doing. And we've been doing that in some form or other since about 2003. But in addition to that, bottom left, we've got our medical emergency response kits. Every building has a medical emergency response team, we call it a MIRK team for short. And we have a kit of supplies that they can grab if there's a medical emergency for a student or for someone else who comes in the building. Along with that, of course, we have AEDs in the buildings. And I believe between each of the buildings and then the stadium and a few different places like that, we've got about 18 AEDs in the district. So we're making sure that we're covering those areas well. We've invested a lot in security cameras, and so I put a camera out there. And those cameras are used for us to determine different things that have happened perhaps. They serve as a record of what's happened. But then we also have something that we installed a year and a half ago called ZeroEyes, which has a weapons detection component too. And so we've added that onto our cameras and it's helped us to be proactive. On this right here, I've got a picture of a phone. And the key here is this little white button that's covered up. You can issue a lockdown in our buildings from any phone. And so if a teacher is on the far end of the building, they don't need to try to call the office first. They can initiate that alarm and get students safe as quickly as possible. Another thing that we did with your permission years or so ago was we put some cables in our fencing at the ECC here near Pierce. And so if a car were to lose control during the icy roads of winter, and they come across that field, they're not going to get into our playground and hurt our kids. They're going to hit this cable barrier instead. That's similar to what you see along the highway. It will stop them and they will protect our kids. So as you can see, there's a host of different things that we do in order to protect our kids physically. Now, the state has come up with a new emergency operations plan template. And so as of the beginning of next school year, we are required to match their template and have that be our emergency operations plan. So we're a little bit ahead of that. I took that this summer and went through it. And so it's a, a plan that uses common language across the state. And so if we have a student come to us from another school and we issue a hold, that should be no different than a hold in their sending district. And so down at the bottom, we've got five different icons here. Hold secure, lockdown, evacuate, and shelter. And so these are the five words that we would use initially when we make an announcement. And so if we were going to have a medical emergency, we would issue a hold. In other words, the students stay in the classrooms. That way, they're not coming around gawking at whoever's having the medical issue. We can get EMS in and out in a timely manner and so on. And so this common language is what's going to be used throughout the state. So I went through and took all the information from our old plan, put it into the new plan, added some additional things because it's much more comprehensive, and we put together that plan. That plan also has some appendices. And so the next thing that we look at is cybersecurity. And there's an appendancy in there for cybersecurity. That says, here's what we would do if we have some kind of a cyber incident. And we've all heard words like nature ransomware. You have to be a little bit careful because those have legal stipulations attached to them. So just in general, a cyber incident. And what we've done to address some of that is we have a second factor of authentication. We've had that on your Google accounts. We've updated to Windows 11 because Windows 10 couldn't be patched anymore. On our servers, we participate in a statewide thing that uses CrowdStrike to monitor our servers actively. And so 24/7, it could be 2:00 AM this morning and somebody could try to breach our servers. And there's somebody watching that, and they'll take actions to stop that. If they had to take that server offline in order to protect us, they would do that while I'm sleeping and then I'd be notified in the morning. So that's part of the statewide security operations center that the state has given a grant to fund for some time. We also have in Ottawa area, a security operations center now. That's been turned up this year, and we've become a member of that. That's also being funded by a state grant to look at how can we provide support to districts like ours, where we don't have the luxury of having a full-time information security officer. We don't have the luxury of having full-time technicians just looking for breaches. And so now we've got that regionally, and they're doing the same things for a number of different schools. And we've got 13 schools on that right now. And I'm on the advisory committee for that. Just one anecdote with that, a couple of weeks ago, I was up north with some friends and sitting around the fire at, in the evening, and it's about 8:30 PM. It was Saturday, and the head of the Ottawa area cybersecurity operations center called me. I looked at my phone, went, that's not good. And I answered the phone. One of our student accounts had been gotten into, and they used that student account to send 2,500 emails to other people in our APS Falcons. When he called me, they were a third of the way through removing that email from users' inboxes. And he was just calling to let me know. Thank you very much. I didn't have a computer up there, so that was a win for us. We also have an incident response plan that we would activate if there was a major event. So then, just continuing on, we talked a little bit about cybersecurity incident response plan, how we would respond for those things, what are the tools that we have available, who would we contact, who, who's our insurance person to contact after hours, what other resources do we need and so on. And then we also developed a continuity of operations plan to continue operations. Now, that plan was, there was a lot of work done a number of years ago by a prior crisis team. And so I was able to take that work and update it. And then my plan is for the future is to expand upon that, dive down into more detail, continue to improve each one of these plans and appendices so that we continue to improve our security posture. Any questions in general that come to mind? I don't want to get into too many specifics that I dropped, but it's just.
AED and firefighter locations, are those pretty well-known to faculty staff, anybody who's going to be in?
So, once a year, our medical emergency response teams have a training. They are able then to know exactly where those AEDs are in addition to the signage that would be above them. Every room actually has a map like this that shows evacuation stuff and shelter stuff. Those often will have, like, here's the AED on them, here's where fire extinguishers are and so on. So every room has some of those.
Good, and I think you, my follow-up question was going to be training on those devices, and that sounds like Android.
Yeah, they are required to be trained annually on that, and they have to maintain current first aid certification, which is every two years.
We also get, I'm going to speak, but we also get, they train us and we do drills to see how we respond. So like, we do a training drill, and then we get feedback from whether it's fire department, the nurses, how we do that. Part of one of those teams is one of them.
Yeah, that's really great.
Thank you, Audrey. Appreciate that.
Okay, great, thank you, Paul.
Good information.
One of the things that we are just really struggling with at both middle school and high school really is vaping. And it's very hard to locate a vape on a student. They're very creative about where they hide them, and they hide them in locations that they are pretty confident that we're not going to search in an office. But schools have used these metal detector ones. They're very inexpensive. They're very good about protecting, you know, student dignities and privacy rights and things like that. There's usually policy in their handbooks that talks about when they can use. Make sure you do it in a private area. A lot of districts have it set up so that actually, if I think Pam's got a vape, I give her the wand and say. So I don't even hold the wand while she vapes or goes across herself. And, you know, it just, I think it would help eradicate what's a pretty significant problem right now in our middle school and high school. It could be used in bathrooms, you know, and I don't know if kids still do it, but we used to hide a lot of things. We got, not, sorry, we used to hide a lot of things that kids did in the ceiling tiles of the mass room. Let me correct that. So if you had the wand, it's real easy to go, you know, as a principal, just walk into your class, just go across the ceiling and see if there's anything hidden up there. There's just a lot of really practical applications, and I think this is just another step towards keeping kids safe. And I think if we had really strong procedures in place, that we can, men in from schools that have been using them for years, some even in our local area, it's just another way to help keep kids safe and keep some of these things like vapes out of our schools. They also, the schools that we have talked to who have them say that just, kids just knowing that the wands are there has helped renew some of the answers because they, you know, right now, they just figure it's going to be real hard for them to find it. Once they find out there's a wand, makes it a lot easier.
Do they, the other school districts, they express like how often they end up using them?
I don't know. Travis asked for a frequency of it. The one he talked to at tri-county school says most of the time, they never even had to use it. Once the kids saw you pull the metal detector wand out, it's like, okay, nevermind. Like, you know, they knew they were busted, so they give it up. So that, that's like, it's a, it's a huge deterrent, and it's one that, you know, they haven't had to use often. But again, it's paramount that we protect student privacy. We know that.
I was hoping to see a little bit more language around what the policy would actually be. The language around reasonable suspicion seems slightly vague. And then also the comment that you referenced from the tri-county. The individual says, I think it even counts as a reasonable search if, that language is a little too vague for me. I think it counts from somebody else. I guess I prefer to see some actual language of what the policy is going to be and what medical institution would use some of it, so.
Well, that, that isn't the legal standard for schools. So if, or like, for Deputy Orman to use, he has a metal detector wand. For him to use it, he has to have a probable cause. There has to be a legit reason that he really thinks that you have a vape on you. Schools only need to have a reasonable suspicion, so a reasonable suspicion could be a group of kids came and told us. So I know that language sounds kind of vague, and we can flesh it out however we want it to in our policy in our handbooks. But that's probably the language we would build off of because that's the legal standard for schools.
That makes sense, but like, in our policy, you might think that's called up for metal detecting is actually around the safety of buildings.
Right.
So if we're going to implement actually only metal detecting device, I think there should be some other language that's crafted around where it's placed, who uses it, how it gets placed. I'd say for the safety of the district and our administration potentially use it. Deputy Orman is an Ottawa county officer, so I think he has, like, to your point, he just has a different language that he's going to be operating by when he uses his.
Yeah, I think you're bringing up a great point, Josh, and I totally agree. Before, we're not going to buy the wand and create policy. We're going to create the policy by the wand. But I didn't want to start creating policies. The last time I brought this up, there wasn't, people weren't quite comfortable with it yet. So I wanted to bring it up and see if we're comfortable. If we're comfortable, then I will have our administration work on it.
So is the level can be our comfort level maximum, or is the level can be to purchase? And then we will decide what the language was.
In November?
Yeah.
Not to purchase the wand. If, if we can get the language ready for them, my guess would be, if we're comfortable, we'll work on the language. We'll have a work session in November, at the end of November, where that language will be presented. Then, because the reality is, if I buy the wands, I don't need board approval necessarily for buying the wands because they cost 30 bucks. But if there's, I need approval for the policy. So that's what I would see the timeline being, come back in November, review of policies and handle of language we would like to institute, have the board say yea or nay to that, and then it's okay, and we can purchase the wands.
Sounds good. Thanks for the question.
Yep, good question.
Any other questions? Special item B, last proposal.
Yep, so we've been talking about the potential of maybe, maybe a third run at a bond, something that would probably be modified from the last efforts that we made. And again, just for the record, we went out for that first bond proposal, and we lost by like 150 bucks, which was kind of signifying that we weren't far off. And so we felt like by just tweaking it a little bit, maybe that would push it over the top. But clearly, the significant defeat tells us that that was not the case. So I think something different's going to have to be presented. But I want to make it clear, I don't feel like a final decision is made yet because I don't think we should go forward if we get a sense from the community that they don't want to entertain anything. I haven't gotten that sense. The sense I've gotten from people is it was too much. I've gotten the sense that it wasn't focused primarily enough on just the school buildings and the education. So I think there's a window here where we can put a proposal together. But tomorrow night, we're having an informational meeting in this room. We've had it on our website and Facebook page. We'll try to push it again. I'm going to send an email home to our parents tonight. And again, I'll probably get some parents tomorrow night, but I'm not sure it's the parents we need. We need community members to come down. They're voting on this. I got them to house to get the information out, but if you have a network, if you've got Facebook page and you can, you know, like the, when we put out our Facebook page, if it can be shared to Allendale Forum or any of those others, that would be helpful. I'm going to have them set up this room with at least 40 chairs, and if I need to put in 40 more, that would be fantastic. I would love to have a few people in here to hear what we have to say and give us the feedback. Hopefully, there's the sense that, that in the right structure, the right proposal would have a chance. And then I'll get a steering committee going. Some of you have already volunteered to be a part of that. We'll sit down with that feedback. We'll look at some of the things that the facility assessments told us were real priority needs. And then we'll try to craft that right-sized proposal. But I truly believe that if we get a significant number of people tomorrow night who just feel like, now's about the time, we're not going to support this. It takes a lot of time of, you know, not just the administration, but the, our, excuse me, our steering committee folks. And I hate asking people to give up, I mean, you know, so I don't think you in this group spent a lot of time on those first two proposals away from your family, working on them, and I don't want to do that if we just don't feel like this is the right time. So hopefully, we get a great turnout tomorrow night. Everybody tell folks, say if you're interested, if you've got, you know, things you'd like to share. Send my letter going home. Usually when I send those letters, somebody's nice enough to share my letters on Allendale Forum too. So when that gets shared, it says right in there, if you can't make it, here's my email address. I'll take email feedback. So that's the goal for tomorrow night. If anything, nope, not if anything, because we don't want more than three of you, sorry. If any steering committee can make it, but that's what my goal is for tomorrow night. And I just wanted to share that. If anybody has any questions about that.
I cannot make it tomorrow, so if anyone wants to go.
I'll be there. The one question that I had, and we kind of talked about it before, I'd really like to hear back from faculty staff. What are the needs of the district from their perspective to make sure our students are academically successful? So I don't think that really had been done in the past.
No, it was. It was, it was done multiple times. I'm sorry to interrupt, but it was done multiple times before those first two proposals were approved. So the information that was in those first two bond proposals, I asked the staff multiple times, had meetings in this room, invited them to come in. I went to the bus drivers, I mean, we checked with the staff. So again, not that we can't do it again, but there is a lot of staff who forgot on those first two proposals.
Yeah, I think, I think that, well, that's great, but maybe at this informational meeting, we can bring some of that present. Present our campus information and stuff. But the bond's predated, so, bye.
No, it's, it's a good point. I just want to make sure this gives you enough to clarify, so I'll try to get around it to that.
I just like to see that. And share it with you.
Any special item F?
Well, this was loaded enough to begin with. And now, I literally got a letter at 5:00 tonight from True that they, there's some other things going on. So just a general overview, 31AA grant money is for safety, security, and mental health. This money's that we've gotten in years past. This year, in the budget process, they included language that talked about a mass, mass casualty, sorry, the word was escaping me, a mass casualty event. A mass casualty event in their description is anything where three or more students get injured, significantly injured. Could be a fight, could be a bus accident, sorry, bus forever. Could be, you know, a weapon situation. There's a lot of ways that, you know, students, three or more can get significantly injured. And in a mass casualty event, with the language that's in place, the state takes over the investigation. And the district has to willingly give up a lot of things, including their attorney-client privilege and possibly governmental immunity, which puts all of us at risk. Now, with that said, the email I got from True this evening says that the opt-in form must be completed by a school official. Although, though the form does not specify which official is authorized to do so, the form includes mandatory certifications, such as those concerning waiving privileges we just talked about and allowing participation in the investigation. It says the opt-in form does not require submission of a board It says the opt-in form does not require submission of a board resolution to accept the funds or authorize the waiver. So there are potential benefits and risks to having a school official. I get the feeling they're talking about me. Here to some of the way somewhere.
I'm pretty sure.
I'm pretty sure that's who they mean. Uh, there are potential benefits and risks to having a school official proceed without school board authorization. And of course, they suggested if we're considering thirty-one AA, then we should consult the EGL. To A, make sure we know what we're getting into, and B, how do we want to proceed with a board resolution? Which sounds like a solid idea. Or having a school official sign that. So, um, but we have to, whatever we, so if we decide we want to take the money, not whatever we decide, but if we decide we want to take the money. Um, something has to be done prior to November sixteen. And so if we are going to take it and we want to use a board resolution, we have to be at our November ten meeting. That's why we're talking about it tonight. Hopefully, you had a chance to read through, look through what it said. You know, I'll be honest, there's, there's faint hope that you keep hearing these whispers that they're working on a budget supplemental. Or they're going to tidy up some of that language and maybe make it less onerous. I'm not holding out much hope because we're two weeks out now. But I think, and then people might say, well, why would you even bother? Well, yes, I think it would put us at risk, so it probably seems pretty obvious you wouldn't take the money. But this is one of those grants where they find out who all submitted and they divide it by the number of applicants. And so if seventy percent of the people are scared off, thirty percent of the people are going to hit the jackpot on the money. Whether that last time you sold for thirty pieces of silver, I don't know. But that is why, I mean, it's not insignificant money either. It could be, you know, the huge school supply, it could be five or six hundred thousand dollars, so. That's about as thoroughly as I think I can share all the particulars on this. Just, I really need some thoughts on this one, so thanks.
Well, we still have time, right, before the ten. So whatever comes to light between now and then, we'll be able to.
One hundred percent.
Use that in our decision. But the other is, kit is the application process open? So that you understand who actually is involved with, uh, going through the applications versus how school has them inside.
I'm sorry, yes, I didn't understand the question.
The schools that have applied.
Oh, I wouldn't see her application.
So it's a closed application, so you don't know who is involved or who hasn't.
I don't think so. Scott, is that true? I, you know.
I can't see it anymore.
No, we don't know who's applying. We don't even know how many there are until they tell us.
I guess I was just suggesting is that we just keep reading whatever. We're not making a decision here.
No, we're not.
But in the information that comes to light, just make sure that's shared with us before the ten. And then if we decide that we don't want to go, we just remove them.
I think what you might want to consider over the next two weeks is where is your comfort level with taking the money if the language stays as is? And then if you're comfortable taking the money, is it something that you believe a board resolution should occur? Or you just want to decide into that end. Troy and I are going to conduct a sleep audit because that's the recommendation and find out. Because they said there's some pros and some cons to have to be a school official. Well, I want to exactly what those pros and cons are and have a share with the board, so you'll have that information too.
Do you think you should return on the dollar amount or the dollar value of the grant?
I wouldn't take it above a hundred dollars. It, it, it leaves every one of our employees in this district vulnerable. Because, um, let's say you're, let's say you're on a bus. Thanks for being here today. It was good to see you all. Three kids get in a fight on your bus. You know, the bus driver's now speaking to the attorneys about what happened. Everything they say would be given up to attorney client privilege. There would be no more privilege. Everything they said would be open to FOIA. It just, you know, governmental immunity could be lost, which is, you know, governmental immunity protects us from. As long as you're not being grossly indifferent, like if, again, these are the drivers, they stood there and watched the kids fight, cheer their mom. That'd be grossly indifferent and they could be liable. But short of that, if they said, hey, knock it off, get away, stop fighting, you know. Then they're not liable because they're trying to end the fight, and so governmental immunity would protect them. I, I think anything that would jeopardize that for our employees is not worth the money. It's really, at one point when this first came out, Seth Segan, who both said, we're not going to insure a school if they design this. Because you're going to be open to so many lawsuits, it's going to be a real, so. No, the dollar amount for me, thanks for asking, I hope you're asking, it was my personal opinion. But if there's no dollar amount, then it'd be perfect.
I was following, I was following that to say, well, that tells me how I can proceed. Regardless of the dollar amount, I think that's a perfect narrative to go along with what we're doing. Is we value the protection of our team and the respirator and the dollars that we need potentially to get to spec.
Okay.
That's my comment on that.
One question I have on that, it's like, is, we've had it in the past, is that pay our support, you pay our support or your energy? Is that funny that we're using a basic?
It is, and we have some carryover, right, from previous years that we can still use. And we, the new language doesn't impact the old carryover dollars because, um, we didn't get them under the guise of the new language. Uh, yes, there are some things we have to move around and pay those people, but we have enough of the budget to cover what we've been using that for. Because some of, some of what we use for people, some of what we use to, I think on grade defenses was part of the things we did with that. There's, there's some things we did that were not employee costs, so. That's kind of what we're thinking.
That's what I was thinking, yeah, it's sort of like not having the money to pay.
Come up here, no, we should.
Yeah, they have to fire our social workers and our, if you know.
It should be, okay, and quite honestly, my, my thought might be that they're going to have so few schools apply for it, they might say, okay. Then they'll, we got supplemental and they'll make it available later in the year. Because sometimes grants come out in January, February, March, and you can apply for them then. So that's, again, just start speculating, but. Now you're saying, you know, for some of the backstory, there was an incident at a school on the east side of the state that. Some people felt like the administration dropped the bomb. They felt like, quite honestly, maybe the school board wasn't as transparent as they could be. Okay, well, talk to them, okay, get them to fix it. But, you know, if you've got four kids and three of them think they're room and one doesn't, you don't punish all four of them. Because they, you know, that's what they're trying to do, because like, it's probably sharing the money because they didn't like the way one school handled it. That's just, it's not correct. So, so I'm glad you're thinking about it. And if anything changes, I'll send it out even before update, I'll get it as soon as I get it out.
One clarification, though. Seth Segan did say this won't impact rates and they will continue to cover all school, schools that apply.
Good question. Make them more comfortable with it. I'm not sure why, but, um. I, I honestly, I can't speak for them, but I think it speaks to the number of districts that they've worked with. Where they've seen them handle things the right way. And they're comfortable that their clients, by and large, do the right things. So, yeah, but you, that's a good question, and Seth Segan has said, like, Troy, that they're no longer, they backed that.
Yeah, because one of the things I struggle with is, so, you know, um. If, regardless of what the incident was, if we have anything, I think we would want to be fully transparent. And it might make no sense to turn that over to the state and say, you're responsible for the investigation. Let's learn, let's grow, and let's share what we've learned with other districts. It's a little bit protectionist, I think, to say, okay, we, we were more concerned about our ability to, you know. For that attorney client privilege and, you know, I, I kind of struggled with passing up, um, any amount of money. That we could use to, to secure the facility, to make our kids more secure when they're at school, so. So I, I recognize, you know, your concern, and I think there's, there's probably some balance that needs to be had there. But, you know, that's how my first step, I don't know, I don't know if there's some other research.
Yeah, I mean, I, the investigative part doesn't bother me as much as the community, you know, public community. You know, we have, I would imagine if we're trying to break out a fight and a kid breaks his arm, now. If we have three or four kids, we know if we lose this immunity, now the parents can say, hey, well, we're going to sue the teacher. Because they were raving up a fight and the kid falls, breaks his arm. This is, this is what it would open up for us.
Good.
And that's something, that worries me. The investigative part, yeah, I agree with you on that. I'm good, I'm okay with that part. It's the immunity of, hey, the teacher's doing her job, bus driver's doing his job, the kid falls and hurts himself. Now you can, now that teacher or bus driver is liable for the student's job.
I would want to ask the attorney, give that specific example, maybe other examples, and really understand if that's the case. You know, what's the impact today versus, you know, absolutely accept this? Because I don't know if there would be a lot of difference, and I didn't, I didn't really read anything about a governmental immunity, so. I'll have to dig into that a little bit, so I understand what you, what you have to answer. But it's, I think we're, you know, have that very direct conversation and, um, before we go on.
Everybody's favorite time of the year, lower policy updates. Uh, this was actually, it's funny, I don't know if I've ever seen as many pages, but so few changes. Uh, it's really quite odd. Part of it is, they actually have been listening to us because we've been complaining for years that they, there's so, so much redundancy in some of these policies. And they actually did try to address that this time, so that's good. But, uh, just go through them all quickly if you have any questions stopping. The first one is twenty-four twelve, uh, twenty-four twelve. I'm sorry, the first one is twenty-two ten.
Yes.
Sorry. Twenty-two ten is the first one. Um, it's on curriculum development and approved courses. And, um, this was based on just some language cleanup that had to do with. The calculation of instructional time for each approved course. This is something that we already do at Allendale, um, based on our clock hours of the year. So it does not impact us in any way. We're prepared for this change. But it's something that they would like to see, um, done for the pupil accounting. The next one is forty-one sixty-two, is that correct?
No, I have twenty-two sixty-six. I don't know.
Oh, man, okay, sorry. Twenty-two sixty-six. So twenty-two sixty-six, um, this is one where there were changes to the language. Um, this is based on changes to federal language on these formal complaints. And so it's recommended that we adopt. You can see the biggest changes on page two under the sexual harassment. Um, it has to do with the, um, criminal sexual conduct. And really, the biggest change is on bonding. So, um, that's really the change to this entire policy is this bonding.
And that's pages and pages and pages.
Yep, pages and pages and pages of the policy for that section. But again, it, you know, we're, we're switching to what the legal standard is, and that's always best to be in alignment with them. So twenty-four twelve, twenty-four twelve, um, has to do with pupil accounting and homebound instruction specifically. Um, it's a change in the pupil accounting angle from the state. And so again, this is one we definitely want, would like to adopt so that we are in alignment with the state regulations for pupil accounting. And it basically just has to do with who qualifies for homebound instruction unconditionally.
Can you tell me, the other one was like, why are they picking up? It has to be a physician now, basically. And they remove everyone else that says, I want my child to be homebound. I get chiropractors, obviously, and psychologists because they're not official doctors. But why can't a nurse practitioner or, do we have any idea why?
I have no idea why. Um, I don't know if a physician is a student or something.
Yes, it does. I knew it wasn't, I knew it. Physician's assistant, because they should be qualified to be able to do that.
And I don't, it says, um, physician, so I don't know who told them, because it doesn't say doctor, it says physician.
I mean, I saw that in the course, I think, I don't know what to do. But they can make contribution from this, so it's fine. And they should still be able to do information in the E or A.
It just means, Scott, I mean, it's officially a final site, we have to.
Yeah, I have no issue. So forty-one sixty-two, um, this is, uh, changes in the return to work language. Um, nothing really for us to consider. They didn't give us any options on this. This is about our, um, transportation. And these are the rules and regulations for transportation, uh, the return to work language, so return to duty. So I recommend we accept that. Uh, fifty-five seventeen oh one is, um. Changes in this came from the Michigan State Board of Education anti-bullying policy. So decades ago, decades ago, it's been a long time. The State Board of Education put out their anti-bullying policy and schools created local policy to match that. And so the changes that you see reflected in here come from the changes that the State Board of Education made.
That true?
Yeah.
I don't see anything in here about it being repeated. So one of the things that we talked about with bullying is that it's a repeated practice. Is that in here or somewhere?
I thought it wasn't. I thought we talked about it when I was with the D O R.
But I looked at the, so what, um, let's see, that's a page, oh, does it have the definition on it? This is. At the end of, at the end of options, definitions, aggressively they're asked, when bullying is defined as written, it is a whole long paragraph. And then it gives, uh, six points, one, sorry, it was seven, one which is removed. None of the six remain, neither did this up, by the way. Talk about repeated action. So I'm wondering where that language comes from, if it's not from this policy.
Well, I'm pretty sure it was, so I, that's a great question, and I'm going to write it down and ask you.
Yeah, I, because when I didn't see it there, I went through the rest of the policy, looking to see if there's somewhere that they had. Moved or changed it, because I don't see that word again there in there.
Yeah, Josh, I'm going to give back to them because I'm pretty sure that's where that original language came from. The State Board's policy, but if they've removed that, then that would be something that's a bit, we have to take a look at.
So this one is adding in, like, the language, including electronically transmitted access. So I know that's something that is going to be a struggle at the middle school with kids on their personal devices, not at school, but at home. On things like social media and things like that. So this policy would give the school permission to step in and discipline kids for things that are at home.
Yeah, my understanding is we always have the ability to do that, and if it interrupts the school, we're the environment. So if two kids are at home and they're having a beef, and they just come in and say, hey, we're beefing at home, then there's nothing we can do. Why? If they're beefing at home on the weekend and then kids come to school on Monday and nobody's learning because everybody's upset about what happened. Now it's interfering with the educational process for kids, and now we can step in and be asking the parents to do that.
And that's a matter of the school, they're looking at it. I mean, they're doing something, the school, like something at school happened and then they're sitting electronically between people at home. Do we have the right to step in and stop that? If they take a picture of someone at the school doing something they shouldn't be doing, or, I mean, like, think of the bathroom, I'm just, or behind something, and they take a picture. And they take it home and they send it to all these other people that. or behind something and they take a picture and they take it home and they send it to all these other people that shouldn't have it. Does that allow us to step in and say?
We do, but it would probably be more along the lines of, um, like harassment and bullying. But yeah, we've had students do that. Like, I remember this situation at a middle school a few years ago where a student took a picture of another student and banned them last because they were specifically supposed to be acting goofy and they took the picture and then posted it. So look at this, we're, um, we were able to step in, so. All right, I will ask you about their repeated because that's important, the word they catch, Josh. All right. I am on to seventy-five forty oh two. Um, this is the policy I asked, uh, Mr. Bolwood to go through as well to, to see if the changes, um, had any significant impact on what we do, and I don't believe that it does. So these are recommended changes. Um, some of this comes from, well, the majority of this comes from the Department of Justice and the ADA Americans with Disabilities Act compliance. And that's why I would recommend adopting those policies. Eighty-three hundred, um, here's some more language about cyber security and it's that continuity of our organizational operation plan. CUP COOP for short, they have like COOP, so I'm really cool with that. Um, they just updated some of the parameters as Mr. Bolwood pointed out to us earlier, and we are in the process of updating our continuity plan so that it matches those expectations. And it's good that our policy matched that new guideline. Eighty-three oh five, um, this is also about informational security. Um, and again, these changes, um, are proposed based on some changes in the, you know, not legal standard necessarily as much as there are changes in practice. You know, we learn things. As incidents happen in other places, they learn things and they, they see court cases and they make some adjustments. And, um, I think this is just a lot that came out of that work that they've been doing on cybersecurity. Part of it is, as Mr. Bolwood pointed out, we don't say cybersecurity, it's cyber security incident, things like that. Just you have to tighten up the language, ransomware incident, um, so just the state trying to tighten up the language that everybody's using to be uniform of those type of instances. Okay, kind of the non-discrimination, uh, policies. And again, here's where they, um, they, they're asking to rescind six different policies. These were all incorporated in the other policy updates listed above. There's already so much paper, I didn't want to send you copies of pages that were all ran out and crossed out. So those policies are available online to see, but they're, they're asking us to rescind those because they're incorporating that in these other policies. So fourteen twenty-two, thirty-one twenty-two and forty-one twenty-two, that's, um, those, these are replacement policies and these incorporate some of those changes from fourteen twenty-two oh two, uh, sixteen sixty-two into these policies. The changes that I think are good and we want to make, uh, and it should streamline our policy manual with that, which would be nice. So fourteen twenty-two, thirty-one twenty-two and forty-one twenty-two are all replacement policies that I think we would want to accept. Didn't know if we had any questions about those. So twenty-two sixty? That's where, see the technical, oh yeah, they changed the office location.
I saw that.
So the, so the office that, so we used to, that if you had a complaint about your civil rights in Michigan, you used to send it to Ohio. Yeah, now it goes out to Washington DC. So the whole change in that policy is the address. Twenty-two sixty oh one, um, I think this was just another, a part of it is the OCR department. Some of it is, they always like to go through every now and then saying, don't use, you know, he, she, they, use the student or parent. Don't use his or her, you thought. So that's pretty much the only corrections there. Thirty-one twenty-three, is that one of the ones that, uh, this is another one with the, um, the technical corrections and the new address. Forty-one twenty-two is one that they updated and consolidated the other policies into. And there will be three different places to look through this information. It will all be in the one policy. They still kind of separating out, right? Like there's still fourteen twenty-two, thirty-one twenty-two and forty-one twenty-two that are really the same thing, except one's for admin, one's for professional staff, one's for the rest of the staff. Seems like they can catch it all in the one policy. That's not how they do it. Um, again, forty-one twenty-three, again, is the couple of learning and then the change. And then I did print out one as well, happy of the ones that were rescinded. So the other ones, fourteen twenty-two oh two, thirty-one twenty-two oh two, forty-one twenty-two oh two, sixteen sixty-two, thirty-three sixty-two and forty-three sixty-two, we get all along to rescind. Rescind all of those because they're incorporated into the policies. Always seventy-five forty-one is also to be rescinded and that's because it was incorporated into policy eighty-three twenty. So eighty, um, seventy-five forty-one talks about electronic data processing, um, and, and again, they just rolled that into the new agency under cybersecurity policy. So again, a lot of agents, but very little changes. I will definitely look into the question about the repeated and get back to it.
The only thing I had as I went through those is we still, and those policies are defining sex forward the law. So I'm wondering if we can remove sort of the explicit pieces and just generally say that, uh, sexual harassment, we're going to basically follow the law if they're done with sex.
We did, I want to run past Colin to make sure that he doesn't think that's going to leave us vulnerable.
Right. And we, we did have that with, uh, an earlier policy that we adopted. So I don't know that we need to go through and audit all of our policies, but as we touched, this, for me, I think it makes sense to, to sort of remove that because we know there's a conflict between state and federal law. So definitely worth asking the attorney about, following the day.
Can you, could you send me an email like highlighting on age this of this policy so I know exactly, that I'm asking exactly what you?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much, thank you. And I have another. Can I go on to the other? Couldn't imagine doing this job last, almost nine years without him, so I probably appreciate him as much as anybody. And, uh, sorry to see him go. He was supposed to space and get all the law together, but, uh, I did, yeah, I did it. So first of all, can we simply run a cross? And thank you. Now with the last little video, come to the attack. So that'd be awesome. Um, but that fun part, kind of not fun part aside, I do have a question you can ask the board. So when Scott hired in, he came in and contracted services with the ISD and he actually split his time, fifty percent here, fifty percent with another district. So years ago, the other district decided they wanted to hire a role in CFO and so, um, the ISD came to me and said, well, we don't really have another district to split Scott with. And so they took him on that other part of his, um, contract that we didn't use him for, sort of. And I give the ISD some credit because they, they weren't really the media about him being in person there and he'd share a lot in the proposal that time. You know, as the years kind of went along, we, we took on more of Scott's salary because of the reality, most of his time spent here. So we are now at ninety percent. So we've been spent paying ninety percent of Scott's salary. The ISD's been picking up the other ten percent. Um, and I guess using special projects on occasion, I don't know. But, um, so now we have to decide. We have, the ISD, I met with their business manager and he said they'd be happy to post and hire a CFO. We can continue to do contracted services. Um, I, my recommendation is now is the perfect opportunity for us to hire a home. Uh, the first reason that jumps to my mind is because then we get to select the person. If you contract with the ISD, they are going to post and they are going to interview and they're going to hire the person that we choose. And so I would recommend since we're so close to paying his full salary anyways, that we would move forward. But I wanted to hear from the board, um, if you're comfortable with that, then we can, Troy, I can take a look at getting that posted. It would be nice to post several weeks, interview, maybe have somebody at least selected mid-December so that there's some conversation between the new person and Scott from the entire, so. There is some value in keeping the ISD involved, but I think that it's, it's not as valuable as having our own person come in. Um, I would probably look at putting them in, if you remember the salary schedules and there's that tier one. It's myself, Troy, that and Ryan, I would put this person in that same tier. And I think that's where they rank in most districts, the CFO, so that'd be my thought there. But I just wanted to hear if there were questions, concerns, thoughts, preferences.
I'm in favor of that. Makes sense to me. Especially for everything I do.
Yeah. Well, Scott, you know, a couple of years ago, we also had a half-time person who did accounts payable, how's receivable? How's receivable? All bunch of days. Business stop to stop. And then she left to take another full-time job somewhere. And that's where Scott's responsibilities really grew. And so, um, yeah, it's kind of morphed into exactly what we needed. So instead of place now is exactly what we wanted to do. Other thoughts?
I think that makes good sense. And there, do you think there'd be any time for, um, sort of overlap? Because Scott, like, kind of talked about how much different it is if, you know, you go down to a school setting. Or, you know, maybe a kind, an opportunity for a contract after retirement to come back and sort of oversee and get somebody else to.
It's possible, yeah. We want to see what the pool of candidates look like. So quite honestly, there could be business managers in other districts who already have experience when they're looking, we can move to a bigger district. Sometimes somebody got a job as a CFO in Calidonia, but they live here in Allenale, Puplesville, they'd like to be closer to home. So there's a good chance we can get somebody who's already got, not Scott, all this experience because nobody can be Scott. But close, but close. So I, I, it's a good question, but I think we'll, we can wait and see what our opinion is.
Yeah, the second, the second piece with on that was if Scott in the interview came up.
We could. We don't typically do that. We don't typically have somebody interview for the job they're leaving. Sometimes we go on like a first round just to make sure we, when we ask all the technical questions, they did that. Does that's what they really need? Okay. So yeah, that's a good possibility. That is all I have.
Twenty-two sixty oh one, they got that, uh, they crossed out his and her and just makes bad grammar.
Makes it what?
Bad grammar. The first things that they have been discriminating against on the basis of disability. Should be, should, they crossed out his and her.
It should be a cross.
Should be their disability.
Somebody's disability. They crossed those. No, what's that?
Yeah, I don't know if that's, I mean, I'm, I'm a bit.
It is, uh, it's a little bit, but there's nothing wrong with it, but I guess it's almost feels safer to go with what our law gave us. They're the ones saying that they'll back us on this if there's any problem with it. But, I mean, there's nothing saying we can't change the grammar.
Well, I just didn't know, but just got to guess that they were supposed to be.
I mean, I can't imagine they're going to say your policy's null and void because you changed, you added the word there.
We actually bring in someone who's.
Right.
We actually put in someone there.
Twenty-two sixty oh one. Somebody find out who Kevin's English teacher was. It's so hard. Nice job! All right, I, I will. Is that something you'd like me to do for the final read?
Um, it doesn't, if, if that's the way it was presented, it's fine. I just didn't want to.
I didn't modify this, so this is the way that it would be there. You know what that means? That means a year from now, you'll get a technical correction from them. Say you have a little bear shit in there. You have my other? All right, well, this one's bittersweet. Uh, I received a, an email today, even though I was told last week, but, um, Mr. Scott Park is retiring at the end of January of twenty twenty-six. Very happy for Scott. Seems to be a good place. He seems to be excited about the opportunities and the way ahead for him. You'll get it tonight. I'll give myself evaluation of my evidence this evening.
Everybody here, is it right now? Yep. You can change a, uh, you know, all possible problems.
It's time to take an attorney.
All right, uh, public count. No public count? Nobody signed up? Is there anybody at this time who would like to make a public count?
I didn't prepare, so I apologize for my words. But anyway, um, thanks to you guys for going through all those policies. Um, on the thirty-one AA, I think that's what it was, um, definitely have concerns about liability. Uh, I think it's probably no doubt that there will be lawsuits from it eventually. Not that we want it, but it's a potential, very potential thing. Um, if there's an option for a lawsuit. It's just human nature, unfortunately. Um, asking attorney will help, but a lot of, you know, things like, I'm no expert at this and you guys all know that. So, but we know that, but, you know, what happens is they have to play out. There has to be court cases to have precedent to know how this is all going to play out. So it's just my thoughts. Um, also, um, shoot, I love my phone. I was going to read a thing. Um, there's, uh, a proposal, I believe, at the state school board level, um, regarding trying to get the sex ed, more sex ed stuff in the mainstream, um, health education class, um, which is a requirement for graduation, which makes it less opt-outable and I believe not opt-outable. Um, and I know that there's mixed messages about this. I know the board, the State Board is denying, you know, saying that's not true. But nevertheless, I think there's a little, where there's smoke, there's maybe a little fire. And I just would encourage board members to make sure you're, um, paying attention to that. How it rolls out, how it affects you guys, how much control you have, I have no idea. That's, you know, but just wanted to make sure that we're informed on that. So, thank you.
Any other at this side? Then Washington Return at seven o'clock.